We think Mr. Gallway may have forgot we changed the meeting dates, we're not sure, because nobody heard from him. We're going to start with a couple of presentations from the Park and Rec Department. We have the scarecrow contest, the house decorating contest, and the photo contest, right?
That's right, we're doing all three awards tonight.
Mr. Andrews is here to present. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Pretty simple process, we're going to announce the winners for the three contests, we're going to call everyone's name, we'd like them to come up, accept their certificate and a gift card, and we'd like to take a photo with the board at the conclusion of each award, if you don't mind. So without further ado, we're going to do the scarecrow contest first. Third place winner in the 2019 scarecrow contest with traditional theme is the Boot Yard family. Okay, doesn't look like the Boot Yard family was able to make it, I will accept it for them and make arrangements to get them their prize. Second place winner in the contest is the Powell family. They didn't make it either. I didn't hear from either, but I was hoping they would show up, but I'll make sure they get their award. First place winner in the 2019 scarecrow contest is the Sebastian family, I know they're here. Okay, the next set of awards is for our 2019 photo contest, this is the fifth year we've done this contest, we had probably over 200 photos we had to pick from, the Park and Rec Board was very busy over the last few months picking the winners. So we had five different categories, so we're going to announce each category and call the winners up and accept their prize. Okay, the winner in the architecture category is Linda Bogard. The winner in the wildlife category is Judy Cagiano. Winner for the plants flora category Pamela Kennedy. And a winner in the landscape category Denise McHugh. One more, I thought we were ready. One more, almost forgot, the old famous miscellaneous other category Leanne Sebastian. Third place winner from 127 Louise Drive Matt White. Second place winner in the contest from 204 Valley Road Chris and Terry Byers. I'd like to thank Ralph Asman from the Park Board helping me out tonight.
Thank you, thank you both, and congratulations to everybody that wanted me. Mr. Clark, we did have an executive session.
We did, Mr. Chairman, prior to the meeting, the board met an executive session to discuss various personnel matters and a matter involving collective bargaining.
Thank you. Public comment, first item on our agenda, we only have one name and Tony Batiste.
First off, there was no notice in the paper about the change in the meetings, and not everybody comes to the meeting, but also not everybody checks the website. The only place I found it on the website, other than to look through the meetings, the actual video of the meetings, was if you went to the Board of Supervisors and the Agenda, you found the Agenda for tonight's meeting. I went there because I wanted to make sure, because of being a federal holiday, that we were actually going to have the meeting tonight. But a lot of people won't think to do that, and I'm sure, well, thinking, maybe somebody might actually show up tomorrow for the meeting, and it's not going to be tomorrow. So, and a lot of the other townships and municipalities do post the organization meeting and a list of the dates throughout the year, and I know you don't need to put the date, you just need to put the third Monday, so maybe a short newspaper notice, or a blast on the email, if you guys do that, or a little blurb on the website itself, when you pull up the website, that it's right there in front of you, that there is a change.
Just a heads up, next month it'll be Tuesday, because Monday's a holiday, it's President's Day, so, just to give you a heads up.
Today was a holiday.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's a Falls Township holiday, we're closed on Monday.
Okay, so then, yeah, that should definitely be posted. Is there any news or updates on Elcon, the hearing, any legal matters or township interest or concern with Elcon?
Not since our last update at the last meeting.
So nothing's occurred since then?
That's right, Mr. Clark. Anybody else for public comment? Oh, one hand, Mr. Harvey.
Commissioner Harvey.
Commissioner Harvey.
Now I can say all the things I always wanted to. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. As you know, may have seen, I'm starting to make my way around to the different boards and municipalities throughout the county, just to talk a little bit about what things that we would like to do at the county level, and also just give a few little pieces of information, updates on things, not only for you and for the administration, but also for the public. Couples, just a few items, as we know, especially in this township, and a lot of the townships in this county, the opioid crisis has been a serious issue for many years. We think, I know, having sat up there just a month ago, that we feel like we might be, you know, we're turning a corner in some ways in terms of making some progress, some of the things that we did as Board members, I think have made a dent. Narcan, as you know, is something that has been used for years now to provide, you know, life-saving measures to people who are in the grips of an overdose. The county, Bucks County Drug and Alcohol Commission is sponsoring free training for anybody who's interested throughout the county in three different times, three different locations. The first training is actually this Thursday at the hospital here, Jefferson Hospital, 7 o'clock. I know Mr. Gray, I talked to him, I think he came through the PD, I think they got information on it, and so again, free training for anybody who's interested, that's, and it's going to be for all lower bucks. The next training is going to be in March in upper bucks, and then there's another training session in May in central bucks. But for anybody who's interested in that, it's something obviously worthwhile.
Do you know if, what the training, are they giving, like, samples out, or, you know, like a...
No, Mr. Brasky, I'm not sure, I know there's a flyer, which I know the PD got, and I don't remember if it said that it was going to be giving out samples to that, I'm trying to pull up, because I did take a photo of it, I'm trying to see if I could pull up real fast.
You mean of Narcan?
Yeah. I mean, I think it's a great event for people that, obviously, you know, may feel as though they could need it in their life, or for a loved one, so, you know.
Right, it does say one unit of Narcan per household will be provided.
Thank you.
So, yeah, thank you, good question.
Mr. Tequita and Gray, we can make sure that goes on the website, as well as the meeting update times.
Any other issue I want to bring up, just because it's going to be something brand new for everybody, including us, is the new voting machines. And the county, previous to my taking office, the county did purchase voting machines, ones that rely on a paper ballot, so that even if there's some kind of breakdown in a machine, or some kind of question about a machine, there are verifiable voter-marked paper ballots. And the way I've been describing it, and having just come from education, is essentially they're the bubble sheets you filled in for tests, it's basically what it is. You know, you're going to show up, you're going to be given a ballot, a paper ballot, you color in whatever candidate or candidates you want for whatever offices are up for election that year, you're going to take it to a scanner, which is about the size of a, you know, a desktop printer, and you're going to put it in, it's going to read it, it'll ask you if you, you know, assure you when to cast your ballot, you push a button, and it goes into a back, into a bag, it's attached to the machine. If you change your mind, you can have it spit back out at you, and you can change it. It will also catch mistakes if you have overvoted, for example, if there were two supervisors up for election and you voted for three, it'll tell you that when you put it in the machine. And you can, you actually have the choice of having the machine accept it anyway, in which case all three of those votes are, won't count, everything else will count that you marked, but not that. Or you can have it spit back at you, and you can erase it and send it through again. The county's already received dozens of these machines, they're already coming in, the warehouse is getting filled with them and supplies. As you may know, there is a special election in March to fill now Commissioner Deidre Alamo's seat and Ben Salem, so we'll have a chance to actually go through and see how this works, and make sure that we have a little bit of, it's a little bit of a head start for the April primary. We do lose a month of preparation this year, presidential election years, the primaries in April, not May, so it's good, you know, maybe to have this little first bite at the apple. There is going to be free training, there's going to be training for all poll workers, anybody who works inside the election areas, polling places, judges of elections, machine operators, et cetera. The county's offering training from, really from later this month, early next month, all the way through April, in a lot of different locations, and that also is posted on the county website. So, and there's going to be free training also, actually, training, the machines are going to be on demonstration for people to get a chance to see them, and they're going to try and work with the legal women voters to put them in places like senior centers and other areas where people can just come and just see the machine and get a chance to familiarize themselves prior to April. So, and as, you know, you guys have all my contact information, so any, any issues or things you want to be, you want, you want help with, you know, I ran with the hope that we could get the county and municipalities working more closely together, so that's, that's why I'm here.
Thank you.
All right, one, one question, I did speak today, I forgot it was a holiday, but did reach out to your assistant, and I was just kind of curious, he said he would look into it, if there was any county open space money still available for Falls Township.
Okay.
So if you could just maybe touch base with him tomorrow, and you guys can get back to me.
Yeah, and if I could invoke the, sort of the Mariani rule and go a little bit over my five minutes?
Clark, go ahead.
Obviously, I know that this is, and I thank you for the reminder, this is the last meeting for Mr. Gray, as the manager here. He and I have known each other since I was first elected in 2003, and took office in 2004 when he was Finance Director. It is not an exaggeration to say this Township would not be where it is today without the work of Peter Gray. He is incredibly well-respected by the people who live, who work in this building, and by a lot of residents, he's done a tremendous job, in my opinion, and I know he's, he's done every, he's kind of poured himself into this job, and I respect him for the work he did, and how hard he, how hard he worked over these past, well, almost 20 years, you know, or as an employee, more than 20 years as an employee. So I'm going to thank him personally, I know you're, you know, probably going to do something later on, but just want to take my time to thank him personally, and I'll, I'll stick around, I guess, for a little while, but, but, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, anymore for public comment? All right, item number two on our agenda is consider agreement for Foster Digital Media Productions LLC. Mr. Tequita?
The township received a quote from Foster Digital Media for the production of the Board of Supervisor meetings at a rate of $105 per hour, in half, billed in half-hour increments, and also for system redesign, equipment repair, and troubleshooting at a rate of $75 per hour.
So basically, they're going to be recording our meetings, running the equipment in the back, the two gentlemen that have been doing it for a long time, Denis Asapovich, one of them is retiring, and the other one left a few months ago for, I guess he has a new job, so we had to find someone new, and this is the person that we found, Foster Digital Media. Any questions, Board members?
Just a quick comment that Foster Digital Media currently serves Lower Makefield Township and Middletown, and does the same work for them as they'll be doing for Falls Township.
Any public comment? No? All right, is there a motion?
Some move?
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
All right, item number three, consider authorizing manager to finalize the award bid for the heating and air conditioning replacement project for the Police Department.
At the December 17th, 2019 Board meeting, the Board approved a notice of intent to award to Ray Litwin for the Police Department HVAC project. Jones Engineering has worked with Ray Litwin regarding the responsible contractor ordinance, it's been determined Ray Litwin will not be able to meet the ordinance requirements. The Board has asked to consider rejecting the bids for this project.
All right. Any questions, Board members? Mr. Brasky?
No, thanks.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to reject all bids for the Police Department HVAC project.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor of rejecting all bids?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Item number four, consider purchase of vehicles for the Police Department. Mr. Tequita?
We have several numbers from Lieutenant Whitney regarding the purchase of vehicles for the Police Department. Lieutenant Whitney is here this evening to discuss this matter.
Lieutenant Whitney? Thank you. So as you might imagine, next to recruiting and hiring and training, maintaining a police fleet is one of the biggest challenges for any police department. For 2020, we are seeking to purchase three new vehicles that were approved in the 2020 capital budget, a Ford, two Ford Explorers, one marked and one ghosted, and a Ford F-150. These vehicles will be replacing some older vehicles in our fleet, a 2008 Crown Victoria that has extremely high mileage, and two Ford Expeditions that have been in service since 2016. One has 96,212 miles as of about noon today, the other one 85,000 miles on it, so they're used every day by supervision, and they're becoming maintenance nightmares. So they were slated for replacement in 2020. Also, we're seeking to upfit a vehicle for use by the ACO. The ACO has been using a 2005 Chevrolet that has really been a maintenance nightmare for us recently, and working with some other department heads in the township, we located a vehicle that the township already owned, that we could repurpose for use by the ACO that had low mileage, and for the cost of $6,379, it'll be upfit specifically to be used as an animal control unit vehicle. The other vehicle we're seeking to buy is a replacement for Unit 3430 that was totaled in a crash up on Route 13 in November, that vehicle was totaled by our insurance company, and we're working with the insurance company to offset some of the cost, but we're seeking to replace that vehicle as well, and that would be another Ford Explorer.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from Board members? Mr. Brasky?
No, just the two, the vehicles that were replaced, and we'll be putting them out on municipal?
Yes, that's typically what the township has done, so they'll be pulled off the line and available to be put on municipal.
Okay, and, I know we have discussed this in executive session, but if you could, I don't know if you can discuss it, but when, we had this issue before where one of our cop cars was totaled.
Your cop car?
Your cop cars totaled?
Yeah, we lost two on 13 in three months.
Right, but then we went, we went to court over that, right, and we were able to recoup the difference between the insurance payout and...
Through restitution.
That's correct, yeah, we got a restitution order for that vehicle. I'm not sure where the prosecution of the person who was DUI that crashed into our other car is, but that's something else we can seek to recoup there as well.
Okay, great, yeah, great, thank you.
Just one question regarding the low-profile ghosted, can you explain what that, what that is?
So, with our emphasis on proactive patrol, we had been using unmarked vehicles, we had some unmarked Crown Victorias, you know, we had that police impersonator that still remains at large, that was driving a vehicle that looked just like them. So, we decided to move in a slightly different direction, the ghosted vehicles are a low-profile vehicle, they're all black, they're not black and white, they have a light bar that's internal rather than on the roof, but to kind of balance out our concern with having a low, lower-profile vehicle, but a vehicle that also kind of meets the safety concerns, especially when you're up on the highway at a crash scene, that the markings on the vehicle are kind of almost hidden during daylight, but at nighttime, when headlights hit them, they pop white.
Okay.
So we have safety markings on the vehicle, so it's considered a marked vehicle, but it's not your typical black and white marked car.
Got it, thank you.
Yeah, a couple of vehicles was mentioned to be replaced because of the mileage and whatnot, are we able to retrofit the cages inside that light package, because that's a good third of the cost of the vehicle is, you know, all the safety equipment that goes in for the, from what I understand, is that true, the radios, the computers, are you able to repurpose them into the new vehicles, or do you just...
Some of the equipment, yes, the radios are repurposed, along with the computer mounts, the weapon mounts inside the car. The cages can't always be used, because sometimes the body style changed, which was the case in 2020, the body style for Ford Explorers, the vehicles are about a foot wider and a foot longer, so we had to buy new cages for that, and some of the, sometimes the technology with the lighting changes, so we typically don't recycle the lights. In particular, in 2020, we're looking to have a light package that at nighttime is a little less bright, because there've been some studies out there that indicate that the lighting at night, during the day, you want it to be very bright to attract people's attention, but at nighttime, sometimes it's too bright, and the traffic can't really see the outline of the emergency vehicle, and it's led to, you know, some first responders being hit while they're on the side of the road, which we want to avoid, so we're changing some of the technology to dim that down at night.
Okay. Thank you.
All my questions were answered, any public comment needed? No hands? All right. Mr. Clark, do we do these individually? We have five different purchases here.
I think they're all listed, and you've got all of them, if, unless somebody wants one pulled out, you could approve them all at the same time.
Pete, you know what the total is for all five?
I do not, I do not have a total for the vehicles.
You guys have to push your mics to use them tonight, too, just a reminder. There you go.
I have 191,560, does that sound right? I'm disappointed, Mr. Gray.
Should I play some Jeopardy music while there? Okay. For four vehicles and the retrofit to the ACO vehicle.
Was it 204?
206,004.
All right, we have a, $206,004, is there a motion to approve the purchase?
Moved.
Second.
All right, Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Brasky?
Yes.
Mr. Vince?
Yes.
Mr. Rocko?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Gentlemen, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, item number four, oh no, that's the number four, I'm sorry. Item number five, Mr. Mariani's favorite of the year, consider proposal for geese management service at the Falls Township Community Park. Mr. Andrews is here to tell us all about it.
Okay, this is the fifth year we've been doing this active geese management slash harassment program at the community park, it's been very successful over the past five years, it involves several different techniques, we employ noise, effigies, let me see what else we got in there, we've done some, yep, we've done some water harassment at night in the past few years, and part of that is also egg addling and nest, nest destruction, where we find the, you know, the eggs and everything. This has been a very successful program over the past five years. We had a slight spike this year in the total cost, probably went up 8% from last year, but overall, over the past five years, I believe our cost's been down probably 20% since we started in 15.
What was, what was the cost for 2019?
For 2019, it was 22, 22,865. There was a bill that came in right near the end of the year, probably, might've, might've went over into the next year or so, I kind of did the numbers today, just to make sure, went over slightly from last year, about 8%, but other years it's gone down. And we also supplement this, we also do the Border Collie harassment, it's a 10-week program from March to May, that's a fixed cost of 1990. So, at the end of the day, roughly, the geese program would cost us probably in the area of 24,000 to 25,000 per year, and I just recommend continuing it, because if we let it go, the problem's going to come back worse, and we're going to have geese droppings everywhere, and I don't think the soccer program and our park patrons walking around, our walking paths are going to appreciate it too much, so, that's where we're at.
All right, so that cost only went up because he did January, right?
It went up, we had some spikes this year, you do have spikes at times where, in numbers, you know, where they come in, said he might have to come out a little more often.
I get all that, but he, like, this, this proposal's only, only 11 months, so he must have ate that.
Yeah, it came, it came in late, we, we had, we had some spikes late in the year, which is kind of, you know, abnormal, usually in the past few years, you know, we, we get it down pretty good before the end of the year, but this year we had to do a little more harassment at the end, which, you know, spiked the numbers up a little bit, more than, more than normal.
All right, any questions from Board members besides Mr. Braskys, Mr. Rocko?
No.
I have another question.
I'm a little upset Mr. Shadle's not here, though.
Mr. Palmer, any questions?
I was just curious, I want to beat Mr. Mariani to it, if we were going to try anything else this year, because we talked about it every meeting, and this, like, last meeting at the same time, we, we actually said, yeah, we're going to do it.
With the chemicals?
We're going to go into Martha Drive in a circle, and we never did anything.
Yeah, I, I did research that last year, I did forward that information to Mr. Gray about the chemicals, we just never went anywhere with the Martha Drive situation.
They talked about, like, the, they had the lights, they had the air, air sound, there was all kinds of non-invasive things we could, we could and should be trying to do in that area.
In Martha, Martha Drive, yeah, that, you know, when we, we did this presentation, we did look into that, I did forward Mr. Gray some numbers last year on it, but, yeah, we, this was focused on a community park, but there's some, you know, other techniques you can employ over there, though, so.
Yeah, maybe, so maybe this year, we'll just try to stay on, stay on top of that, and try something in that area.
Okay.
The program has been very successful, if you compare with the parks like now, and the number of geese there compared to what it was just five years ago.
Yeah, we've got, we've probably got it down to probably about 20 to 30 resident geese, you know, when we got it down, I mean, it spikes at times during migratory season and all, but I think before the program started, we were over 100, consistent down there, and I think you all saw it personally down there when we did the kickball that year, it was bad, we were dodging it, so, that's why we started employing it, and I think it's been successful, I recommend continuing it.
Yeah, I always ask about a roundup, so maybe if you can ask Mr. Shadle.
That's in there, limited take is in there.
It is, and the, the old-school roundup-type technique is a little harder to come by now to get approved, but the limited take option's always there, which we haven't had to use yet, so.
Right. Right.
But we do have that option.
Do you know how many that is?
Four.
The limited take?
Uh, I think it's, we can do up to 25.
I mean, if we have 28 resident geese.
Yeah.
You could take and there's 20 more.
Yeah, it's, yeah, there's a limit, I had to double-check the numbers on that. I, I do have that on some paper, I can find that for you all and get it. I don't want to give you inaccurate info on it, but it's, it's, it's a very small number and we haven't had to do that yet. I think we've had it, managed it where we still have some geese down there, which a lot of people enjoy, and, but to the point where it's not overwhelming, if that makes sense.
Any public comment needed? One hand. Motion for public comment?
So moved.
Second. Aye.
Mr. Mariani, for years I wanted to do this, but Mr. Harvey, when he was chairman, wouldn't let me, but we've adopted the Gong Show format, so if you get out of line, Nelson Whitney's hung around to escort you out if he has to, just so you know.
Let me, let me tell you something. The only guy around here that stays within five minutes, so. All right, to quote Yogi Berra, deja vu all over again.
Yep.
Every year we consider a proposal to manage the geese rather than eliminate them. And every year I have consistently recommended some of the most effective methods to eliminate the geese, like flight control, reject it, reject it, fog. And last year I added to that list a solar-powered line, a light, that is maintenance-free, and I think that's what Mr. Boraski was talking about, and I sent you people information on it, too. It's not troubling to people, environmentally friendly, humane for the geese, it's cost-effective, that's the most important thing, and it's sustainable. The solar power lights, they charge every day and they flash 360 degrees every two seconds. Each unit to get rid of geese within a hundred yards radius. There's a unit for every type of landscape, pay attention to that. The industrial unit is recommended to use in public areas such as athletic fields and parks. Then they have a floating water unit that's recommended for use in ponds, lakes, retention areas, and waterways. Those units can stay in the water all year round. And there's also a unit for decks and roofs. Now, a unit takes about a second to install, and it's easily moved, you can move them around. A single unit will effectively protect an area three and a half acres. It can, it continually protects, it doesn't require any maintenance, okay? So, there's no concern about, well, we're going to apply this, and then we cut the grass and then it has to be reapplied, so we get rid of that objection and, and any other objections that, that lean that way. The cost of a unit is $370. That's economical. Now, here's the good part, there is a fleet, free placement study, and they use Google Earth. The, the company comes in, they photograph the area, they measure and recommend the unit type that you should need, and the placement then is recommended where you should place them. That's free. That recommendation you will have in 24 hours. And every year we, you know, we agreed this select, he brought up, a confined specific area to use a product and evaluate it. It's more than one year, it's at least two years that was done right here, we're going to do it, and it was never done. I don't know why.
Excuse me?
So, you know, now, what legitimate objection you can have to a trial that gets rid of geese and prevents additional geese from coming in, it prevents them coming in again? I don't know. You've got to give this thing a try, even in a very small area. Call these people, the service is free, you'll have their recommendation 24 hours, not going to cost you anything. I say let's get rid of the geese.
The name of the company, Mr. Mariani?
Pardon me?
What was the name of the company?
I have, I have it here, Geese Deterran Products. Now, I can give the, you know what, I could fax the manager the phone number if you want and their email address, you get in touch with them. I, I really, I, it's two years now, I really do like this, I, I think we're on the right track.
The Martha Circle area in, in Fallsington and Nottingham is a perfect candidate for the floating unit device. It's probably, it's probably of that size, somewhere in a two-to-three acre range with a pond, with a water that sits still back there.
That could sit in the water all year.
Yep.
You don't have to do a thing to it.
I agree with you.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Palmer.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? More? Motion to close public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
I will, I will. Mr. Andrews, you'll follow up on that?
Absolutely, yeah, I, I listened to Mr. Boraski, I think, you know, the items Mr. Mariani was, you know, referring to, I think would be a great, a great, the Martha Circle area would probably be a good test site. I think the community park might be a little expansive, you know, for those things, I mean, it could be part of the solution. But I think the active management we do now is probably more effective, but in somewhere like that, I do agree, that, that could be something we should, you could look into.
Yeah, for $300, it's worth a shot.
Yeah, over there, over in that area, yeah, I think so, right.
Do you think we could have, do you think we could have maybe a, like, a good number for our next meeting in February?
Okay, for the Martha Circle?
Solid number.
For some different options over there?
I just think we go with, I think we look at the option for the floating unit, that company he's recommended, he's recommended for many years now.
Okay.
You know, it's a good, a good test area for that.
And the solar lighting maybe, too, okay.
And if we...
Yeah, I can have that for you.
And we can get a number together and get it to the manager's office, you know, maybe we'll get it on our agenda.
Sure, not, not a problem.
All right, thank you, Mr. Andrews.
Okay.
So, we have a proposal not to exceed $22,000 from Wildlife Control Services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Rocko?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer? Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll stay here.
You're up again, yeah.
Yep, one more. Item number six?
I'm next.
Consider quotes for the purchase of a pool cover for the Pinewood Pool.
Okay, yes, the current cover that we use at Pinewood Pool when we winterize, you know, for the, over the winter, the cold weather season, that, that cover that's on there now is probably as old as when the pool was rebuilt, which I think was '03, '04. So, we're at a 16, 17-year run with that cover, it's starting to rip in places. It's a customized-sized cover, you know, the way the pool's, you know, laid out, for those of you who are familiar with Pinewood. So, we got with Public Works, you know, we're doing the budget this year, and they recommended, you know, see if we can upgrade the cover and get a new cover. So, fortunately, we're going to go with the same company that had the old cover, and they had the dimensions and everything on file, and basically just up, you know, for an upgrade, same type of cover that we have now, is, or the, the quotes you all have in front of you.
All right, so we have three quotes, Lois from Mid-Atlantic Construction and Design, is that right?
That would be, no, hold on a second.
Perfect pools.
Be fact, Factory Direct Fiber Glass, yeah, they're...
$20,193.
Correct.
All right, any questions from board members? Mr. Boraski?
I was just kind of curious what was on page two, that's all I was reading right now. Was that an install or what was that number? That's 18975, cover shape truly, pool cover.
Which ones are, let me, let me just double-check here, the cost for...
It's, it looks like it's Mako Light or Miko Light.
It is, they're all Mako Light, yeah, it's the same one, let's double-check.
That's the one, and that doesn't include the springs.
Okay.
That's the one we're buying.
Yeah, there's, there's one, the Perfect Pools, there's a quote from Perfect Pools, they're, if you purchase from them, but they wouldn't bring a crew out to install, which would take you...
This is everything that, that Factory Direct would be supplying.
Correct, mm-hmm.
And that's all.
Mr. Rocko?
I have none, thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
Basically, it's a retrofit.
Pretty much, yeah. They, they had us on file from Mako, the company that did the pool, probably in '03, '04, when Pinewood was rebuilt. They had it, they had it in the system, we just were able to pull the numbers from there, and these three distributors gave us quotes on it.
All right, I have no questions. Any public comment needed? No hands, all right. We have a Factory Direct Fiber Glass Pools quote of $20,193. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Rocko?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer? Yes.
Thanks so much, good night.
Mr. Andrews, have a good night. Item number seven, Consider John Strazari's Employment Agreement. Mr. Tekeeta?
The employment agreement for John Strazari as the Township's Information Technology Coordinator is prepared for the board's consideration.
All right. Mr. Strazari does all our IT work in the township, he has done for many years. He used to have his own business that we contracted with, and then we hired him ourselves, and we saved a lot of money doing that. Is there any, any questions from board members?
No.
Just to be clear, the salary is $71,000 annually.
The John's new salary will be $71,000, and John also moved from a 35-hour work week to a 40-hour work week, so it's a good thing for the township as well.
Mr. Palmer, any questions?
Yeah, when he is working on both sides of the operation, either with administration or the police department, who does he answer to? Who's his director?
John's, under John's new agreement, he'll answer to the manager's office.
Always the manager?
Nope.
Or does he answer to the chief at the police?
Nope, for both, both, all his duties, he'll answer, they, to the manager's office.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
No, I, I do know Mr. Boraski spent some time working with John and, and other township people on this, so thank, thank you for the time.
Any public comment needed? No hands, all right. We have employment agreement, $71,000 per year, retroactive to September 20th, 2019. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All right, Mrs. Pullen, I guess?
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Rocko?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer? Yes.
All right. Item number eight, Appointments to various boards, councils, committees, and commissions. I know at our last meeting, we did not appoint a labor council, because we didn't have the proposal in front of us, but I know we've all seen it since then. So, are we appointing Mr. Hearn himself, Mr.?
No, Mr. Dents, I believe the intention is to appoint the law firm of Obermeyer, Redman, Maxwell, and Hippel LLP, consistent with the letter of December 5th, 2019, that they sent as their request to be appointed for legal services as labor and employment counsel for the township.
Okay.
Do you want to repeat all that, or make a motion to that effect?
Yes, that's perfect, all right.
I will make a motion to the effect of what Mr. Clark had said.
I have a second, what Mr. Clark had said.
Excellent, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, any other appointments?
Yeah, the Board of Appeals is a three-member board, three-year term. Brian Binney is currently on it, and his term expired, and he would like to be reappointed, so I would make that motion.
Second.
All right, motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, all right. Any other appointments?
The Environmental Advisory Council is a seven-member council with three-year terms. It looks like one, two, three, four terms expiring, of which three would like to be reappointed. Eric Person, Neen Delwich, sorry if I'm mispronouncing these names, and Philip McElune, what, McElune? Yeah, would all like to be reappointed. I'll make that motion.
All right, motion's made. I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. There are several openings on the Neighborhood Traffic Advisory Committee. This is a relatively new board, I guess we're a few years old, that deals with complaints about traffic in and around the township, which we get a lot of, you know, that was usually our number-one complaint here and on social media. We have two vacancies to be filled, and we have letters of interest, one from a gentleman named Ian James and another one, Robert Leary. I'm going to make a motion to appoint both of them to the Neighborhood Traffic Advisory Committee.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, all right. Also, the Parks and Rec Board. I guess, we have two expired terms and one vacancy on top of that, right? Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, well, we have a letter from Ralph Asplin and Lorraine Strolak. Both of them have been on the board for quite some time. Ralph has been on the board longer than I've been here, I think, and they both do a great job. Both are great volunteers, you'll see them at all the events. I'm going to make a motion to reappoint both Ralph, Ralph Asplin and Lorraine Strolak.
A second.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Planning Commission has two expired terms, two vacancies. I haven't spoken to anyone.
I don't think it has two vacancies.
I don't think that's, I think that's probably, still from when we had seven.
So, Mr. John Haney and Mary Leschuck are both members and both wish to be reappointed. I'll make that motion as well.
I'll second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Police Pension Committee has two expired terms, Thomas Roach and Suzanne Hannigan, no other vacancies, and they both wish to be reappointed. I'm going to make a motion to appoint both Thomas Roach and Suzanne Hannigan to the Police Pension Committee.
A second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
In a row, Mr. Dents.
Yep, one more?
Yep.
Shade Tree Commission is a three-member commission. We have one expired term, Eileen Donahue, and she also wishes to be reappointed. So, I'm going to make the motion to reappoint Eileen Donahue to the Shade Tree Commission.
All right, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed? None? All right. Thank you. Anything else?
No.
None?
None.
Okay. All right, thank you. Item number nine, Minutes from December seventeenth and January sixth. Everybody who's present, any corrections needed or additions? Excellent minutes as always, Mrs. Pullen, one with Mrs. Mull, though, so she can get credit for one.
I'll make the motion to accept both minutes from December seventeenth, twenty nineteen, and January sixth, twenty twenty.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Aye abstained.
All right. Item number ten, Engineers' Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Board members, you will see that for our month of December, Engineers' Report, there are two new earth disturbance projects, reported, one new land development application and one new floodplain permit application.
Real quick, your mic won't pick you up unless you're...
You gotta push the button.
It's only push the button.
Gotta hold it.
Nope, no you don't.
Hit like the... Oh, I'm sorry.
Again?
Yep.
Is it better? Okay, let me start again. Two new earth disturbance projects listed, one new development project listed, one new floodplain permit project listed. The earth disturbance projects, one of them is a legacy project we inherited, it's just back under construction from an approval in two thousand and seventeen, so that'll be in our report as a progress for construction. The new earth disturbance is for a stream bank restoration at the Lake Caroline Open space off of Trenton Road. That actually is the same for the floodplain permit. That project needs two, one earth disturbance, one floodplain. The new development application is actually a conditional use, that'll be before the board next month. It's for Home Food Services on Twelve Headley Place. In terms of our ongoing land development projects, Saint Joe's is moving along. We actually approved a temporary certificate of occupancy for the apartment building nearest to the stream, so I believe they have twelve residents that recently moved in. All they're left with now is the apartment building across the parking lot and the clubhouse. And the temporary certificate was issued because they don't have final paving down yet, but I'd say ninety-nine point nine percent of all the site improvements are in place and acceptable. MLH Explorations, that's for Phase One, the small building addition to get the operation up and running. The framing for the connector building is underway, and the interior renovations are underway, so that project's moving along as well. We met with them recently and approved a couple of minor field changes regarding sidewalks and where handicap parking spaces go. Kelly Pipe, I'm happy to report the stormwater management basin is, we approved the ASBIL, and it's functioning properly as designed. The only thing that they need to do is seed it, and they can't do that until the weather changes, but once they do that, that project will be substantially complete. The air gas project, they had some issues with their permitting, but they are now back on track, due in large part to the efforts of Mr. Tekeeta. They are now on track to continue operations and construct the larger equipment. They were approved to construct certain equipment, but not all of it. We will be attending weekly meetings out there so that we can keep the Code Enforcement Department abreast of what they anticipate building as weeks go by. So are they in full operation now? They're under construction, and they were allowed, yeah, they were allowed to build some of the smaller equipment, I'm going to say, but the larger equipment, they had to hang up on permit submissions, but they actually just recently resolved that, and we anticipate, at least Mr. Tekeeta anticipates, that they'll be fully on track within a week or so. So they finally caught up.
Got it. I think there's another, Mr. Tekeeta has another meeting this week, right?
Yes. The Campy Components Project is well underway. The building, the structural framing is mostly done, and the site improvements are probably going to follow, you know, they have most of them in place, but there's some things that they have to do in the parking lot, minor things, so that project's moving along well. In terms of McGill Composting, we're working with the applicant on final plan documentation, so we expect that to occur over the next three or four weeks, and we hope to have mylaws for the board to sign at the next meeting, if not shortly thereafter. Truck Smart will be before the Planning Commission next week. That's a building addition. They recently received zoning approval, actually it was last week, so that project will be for the Planning Commission next week and probably before the board in March. Britton Industries is a project that's another legacy project. They were recently cited by DEP for actually moving their operation across MY Lane into the junkyard. They met with DEP, they were cited by the Conservation District, but after a number of meetings and a large effort on Britton Industries' part, they're back into compliance on their development site, and they're going to submit all the proper applications and permit submissions for the junkyard site across MY Lane. So do they own the junkyard site? They do not, and they intend to potentially buy it at some point, but now they're going to lease a portion of it from the owner, and so the owner was at the meetings with DEP and the Conservation District.
I guess that arrangement was made before they started squatting on it?
I think so.
Yeah.
I think so.
I hope so.
You never know.
Well, the owners were there, present for each of the meetings, and they didn't object. So they're aware of what's going on, but they're, I think they're going to do the right thing from here on out. We had productive meetings with Mr. Britton and Dan Carr and the resident junkyard owner. In terms of the earth disturbances, the Covanta Scale House is operational, it's substantially complete. The driveway for Metals USA on Canal Road is complete. Newport Village recently asked for a final inspection for a certificate of occupancy. We went out, and although everything looks great, they have a couple of minor site issues to construct yet, so we'll be going back in a week, but they'll be substantially complete very soon, by next month. Skyline Steel is an operation in the KIPC, and I think we lagged a little bit in our reporting last month, but that's actually in operation and substantially complete. It's minor, it's an open-area pipe coating operation. The Gilles Project, the building addition is completed. They have some cleanup work, grading and seeding to do, but that will become substantially complete in the near future, and the only other project I touch on is the, we issued a review letter for the stream bank restoration for the open space at the county, the one that we report as a new project, so they have some work to do. In terms of the ongoing township projects at Quaker Penn Park, we have a restoration plan in place for reforestation, for public works removed from trees. We had a meeting with the Conservation District, and we have a plan to restore the vegetation, but we're going to work with the board to maybe enhance the plan a little bit, to put back some of the amenities that were there before, picnic benches and such. So that project will be under construction. Once the weather breaks, we'll have the vegetation, the trees on site, and we'll be able to make the plantings then.
Those trees will be donated, correct?
Those trees are being donated, that's correct.
And do you have an actual, like, plan we could see?
I do, and...
Do you just share that with the board?
I will. I will, actually, if it's all the same to the board, if it pleases the board, I can put it on the base camp environment where you can access it.
Yeah, thank you.
We'll get that posted tomorrow. Again, it's a, Mr. Boraski, it's a work in progress because we want...
I understand.
Yeah. The two thousand and eighteen road program is substantially complete. You'll see later on, there's a final payment to General Asphalt. They're in the maintenance period now. The landscape contract, we're still holding ten percent retainer on, just to make sure that the grass is okay when the spring comes. Two thousand and nineteen road program, we're substantially complete with, we're doing final documentation on the bid set in terms of the plans and the design. We will have our last residence meeting for this scope, probably early February, for the Burgess Manor folks, and we'll, you know, mention that again in February. Well, actually, we'll do it before the next board meeting, so we'll get the door hangers out for those folks, and probably the second week, but we'll let you know when that date is in case you want to attend. It has been very successful, the recent meetings we've had. We've had two so far. We have a good turnout, have a lot of good questions, and I think we lay a lot of concerns during those meetings.
Yeah, I attended one of the meetings. You guys did a nice job. They had a picture of everybody's house laid out, so all the residents could come in, see their house, get direction exactly what's going to happen in front of their house.
Nice.
Yep, and we're getting some good feedback, and some residents may have a drainage problem, and they ask for a stub pipe, so we're getting ahead of that. Usually that's under construction, but now we're getting it way ahead of time, and we can get it into the bid documents. And that's the report. Excellent.
Any questions for Mr. Jones? Mr. Boraski?
No, thank you.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
Rocco?
No.
Can you, the only thing I have is, could you explain exactly what and where the county park restoration project is?
As you travel along Trenton Road, Lake Caroline's on your right, if you're heading towards, say, Tyburn Road, and there's a walkway that connects with Trenton Road, and for about two hundred feet from, actually, the sidewalk on Trenton Road into the site, the walkway's failing due to stream bank erosion, and so the county engaged with Gilmore Associates, who submitted a plan to restore that stream bank and actually make some fairly significant changes to the corridor itself within that two hundred feet, so that they can protect it from future erosive conditions and rebuild the trail.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have. Is there a motion to accept the Engineers' Report?
So moved.
Beckett?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item number eleven, Bill List. Bill list of two million one hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-eight cents. That's one, over one point three million in salary alone. And a two hundred and thirty-seven thousand four hundred dollar payment to General Asphalt for, I guess, the kickoff of the twenty-twenty program. Is that what that is?
Yeah, General Asphalt has two payouts, excuse me, one of them is for the finalization of the two thousand and eighteen. I believe it was a small amount of retainage we were holding, and you're correct, the larger one is for the first payout for the nineteen road program, which includes pipe and underdrain.
All right, is there a motion to pay the bills for two million one hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars and forty-eight cents?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We already talked about the executive session. Item thirteen, Police Department Report. Chief Wilcox is here.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. Before I get underway here, this is the first time I had the opportunity to see you. I want to wish you all a Happy New Year to you and your families, and I wish nothing but the best on behalf of myself and the Police Department. Mr. Dents, good luck with your new job. Mr. Palmer, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, what I have for you this evening, I have a couple items here. I'm going to talk about accreditation again, and if I'm sitting where you are, I'm saying, what's he talking about accreditation again? Unfortunately, it's, we have to start it again. Although we were accredited in November, it's starting again. It's broken down into three-year segments, so we're starting accreditation again, and with that being said, one of our other goals is to review our policy, our existing policies. So I just spoke with Sergeant White, he had a meeting today, and his existing team, and I will hope to solicit other police officers from the Police Department to engage yourself in this, and that's one of our big goals for the year, to review our policy book and to do year one of our accreditation.
So when is it, when's the accreditation, if you would?
It's reaccreditation, and it's broken down, it's broken down into four quadrants, and each quadrant is in each year, and there's, under Power DMS, there's been some new rule changes. Sergeant White's aware of that, and he's changing that. He met with the team today, and this will go on, it's kind of a continuous thing to keep on top of this thing, especially with the policy book and accreditation. Accreditation covers most of our policy book, but it doesn't cover everything, so we're trying to be all-inclusive and do the whole thing.
So is our accreditation good for three years that we just got in November?
Yes, the one we just received in November, and it'll be three years from now, so you'll talk in twenty-twenty-two.
Got it.
We'll be up for accreditation again.
Right, right, okay, thank you.
Our steps program right now, there's a graduation tomorrow night at Penn Rin. Officer Jaeger will be in charge of that tomorrow night. We're presently teaching steps in the following schools, Falsington Manor and Disney. We have a Coffee with a Cop planned in February. The Chief for a Day program is going very well. We finished at Eleanor Roosevelt. We're presently in Falsington Manor in Oxford Valley. We've did six Chief for the Days. We have eleven more to go. Mr. Boraski, there was one of our last Chief for the Days, lives at the corner of Tyburn and Taylor.
I seen that on your Facebook page, that was cool.
Yes.
Yeah, good kid.
And finally, gentlemen, our hiring process, under the tutelage of Lieutenant Whitney, and several officers, is going very, very well, and speaking with two of the officers today, they're very happy with the caliber of candidates they have. Our detective bureau is doing all the backgrounds, and hopefully you'll have very good candidates to look at in the future. And finally, in conjunction with what Mr. Harvey said, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that Mr. Gray, I've worked with him for twenty years here, we banged heads several times over the years, but he always had Falls Township first and foremost, and I'm sorry to see Pete go, but I want to say, Pete, you did a very good job, and thank you for everything you did for the township. Gentlemen, that's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item number fourteen, Manager Comment.
I have three items. First is the Tree Vitalized. Recently, the township received applications for the annual spring bear root tree offer. The bear root trees will be available in April for planting shortly thereafter. Township has done similar bear root tree programs in prior years, planting them throughout the township. Over five hundred and sixty-seven trees have been purchased through this program, and applications required for the program. Shade Tree Committee is requesting twelve trees at a cost of fifty dollars each for a total cost of six hundred dollars. Deadline for the application is Wednesday, February fifth, twenty twenty. Board is asked to consider the purchase of twelve trees as part of the Tree Vitalized program for six hundred dollars.
Okay, this is something we've been doing for quite some time, right, Pete?
Over ten years, yes.
Ten years.
Is it once or twice a year we do it?
Twice.
Twice, that's right then.
All right. What was the amount again, total amount?
Six hundred dollars.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Pullen?
Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Mr. Rocco?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes. Second item I have is a resolution to appoint myself as the new Open Records Officer in place of Peter Gray.
Can you explain what exactly the Open Records Officer is, and why we need to appoint you?
The Open Records Officer is the individual who processes all requests for information that come through the township.
All right. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Tekeeta as our Open Records Officer?
So moved.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we'd need a resolution for this as well.
Oh, a resolution. What would that be, a number three?
The number is twenty-five.
Five, all right. All right, is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five, meaning Mr. Tekeeta as the?
Yes, so moved.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right.
The last item I have is new businesses that have opened in December of twenty nineteen. Five oh two Oxford Valley Road is Comcast Xfinity. We have Rodriguez Engraving Incorporated at eighty-five Makefield Road, Acupuncture by George, two oh one Woolston Drive, CMR Audio at four twenty-eight South Oxford Valley Road, and First Call Towing and Recovery at fourteen forty-four South Pennsylvania Avenue.
All right, thank you. Board Comment, item number fifteen.
Mr. Dents, if I could, I do have one item.
Okay. Mr. Clark? I'm sorry?
I have a resolution, which would be twenty-six. This is a resolution of Falls Township, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, regarding the resignation of Township Manager Peter Gray. Whereas Peter Gray has faithfully served the Township of Falls for over twenty years, first as Finance Director and now as the Township Manager, and whereas Peter Gray has provided the township with notification of his resignation as Township Manager effective February fourth, twenty twenty, and whereas tonight, January twentieth, twenty twenty, shall be Peter Gray's final Township of Falls Board of Supervisors meeting, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the Township as follows, that Peter Gray is recognized by this formal expression of gratitude by the Township Board of Supervisors for his many years of service to the Falls Township community. Resolved and enacted this twentieth day of January, twenty twenty, Board of Supervisors, Falls Township, Jeffrey Dents, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. All right, thank you, Mr. Clark. I guess we have to make a motion to accept that, right?
Yep.
Is there a motion to accept Resolution twenty-six?
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
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 There's no one. Thank you, Mr. Gray, Mr. Clark.
Thanks, Mr. Gray.
Say a few words?
Yeah, just push the button, don't raise your question.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I have been here for more than twenty years, and it's been a wonderful opportunity here to serve the Township of Falls Township, and I have nothing but great memories, and I wish nothing but the best for the township moving forward. I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for your years of support and assistance. I want to thank the professionals for all your time and your assistance as well. Wonderful staff, I couldn't have done it without them, and it's been a, it's been a great ride, and I appreciate every minute. I want to thank everybody from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gray. So now, here we go again, item fifteen, Third Try. Board Comment, Mr. Boraski?
Yeah, just, I guess, Pete, I just want to say thank you. I know you've made yourself, in the six years I've been here, you made yourself a vowel to me, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, and with no complaints, you know, you pick that phone up, whether it's Sunday morning at eight AM for a resident complaint or just normal business, and I just thank you for everything you've done for me here. Appreciate it.
Mr. Rocco?
Yeah, same, Pete. I appreciate everything you've done. We've been together for, we've been together, right, for eight years. I've learned a lot from you. Your knowledge that you bring, I'm usually the first to, you know, shout a question at you about some history of Falls Township, and you always have the answer, so that is absolutely going to be missed, as well as, you know, you as a person. I wish you nothing but the best for whatever you're doing going forward, so good luck, stay in touch.
Mr. Palmer?
Well, I haven't been with you for eight years, but I do have to say the transition that you have shown for me greatly appreciated. I have worked with you in the past on odds and end things, and very professional, and I just wish you and your family the best in the future.
All right, you know, I want to echo what everybody else said. They pretty much said it all. It's been nothing but a pleasure. You're a good friend, and like Mr. Boraski said, seven days a week, he always made sure... You're a good friend, and like Mr. Boraski said, seven days a week, he always made sure, even on vacation, he was available. Not that we bothered him on vacation.
Maybe once.
Yeah, he even made sure, even when we told him not to, he would drive home for our meetings. He insisted. And like Mr. Harvey said, Falls Township is a better place because of you, and we wish you nothing but the best. And you have my phone number, and I'm sure we're going to be calling you at some point for something. There's no way we can just walk away, but thank you very much again, and good luck. And with that, we need a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?